Hola Houston, I'm Blanca Blanco, host of Viva Magazine Live. And this is the place where we celebrate the movers, the shakers, and the trailblazers of our vibrant Latino community. And today, we are proud to spotlight on three incredible Latina leaders who are shaping education in the Houston area. That is Dr. Francis Villagrand Glover, who is the president of Houston City College Southeast Campus, and Eva Laredo, who is the board president and trustee of District 8, and also Dr. Adriana Tames, who is the board trustee of District 3. But first, we're going to take a quick break and hear a word from a generous sponsor, Commissioner Adrian Garcia. And we'll be right back to hear from these incredible ladies. And welcome back to Viva Magazine Live. And today, we have the pleasure of speaking to three powerful Latina women who are making an impact right here in Houston's East End. Welcome, ladies.
Thank you.
Glad to have y'all. So before we get started, we want to hear directly what is happening at Houston-- oh, I keep saying Houston Community College, but it is called now Houston City College. There's been a name change. Dr. Villagrand, can you tell me about what's happening?
Yeah, so Blanca, thank you so much for inviting us. We're just so excited to really showcase and really tell our community what's happening, what exciting things are going on.
That's right.
You know, after 54 years of being Houston Community College.
I know, I keep saying Houston Community College.
Right, we're now Houston City College. But no, that our mission remains the same. You know, when community colleges were built in the 60s, after World War II, the mission of community college was to serve the community. That's why, like, Eastside, we're literally in the community.
That's right, you are.
And so although there's a name change, an exciting name change, and even the colors are different now. We're blue and gold. And I'll pass it on to my trustees to say a little bit more about how we evolved to the name change.
That is a really interesting story. Trustee Laredo, can you tell us about how that all occurred?
Well, first, there was a study made. And then, so they went out into the community. They had-- we had several meetings so that that way we could get all the community's input. And so after about six months of going and meeting, they agreed, everyone agreed, that this was something new, something good, and that it was going to make the college evolve into a higher level. And so like Dr. Villagrand said, we're still the community college in the community, serving the community with community practices.
Yes.
And so, and that was the main question, is how are you going to change? And so, you know, but we all agreed. The trustees came together and thought it was something for the betterment of the community.
Absolutely. I know, change is hard.
Oh, it is.
54 years.
I'm having trouble with it right now. And I'm sure everybody else is because we want to keep it since 54 years that we've been calling it.
Absolutely. And it was hard for me in the beginning. I wasn't in favor of the name change. And there was a few of us in the same situation. And it was the fear that we want it to remain the community college. A place where we focus on workforce development, where we're getting anyone who walks through our doors ready to enter the workforce, that it's affordable, right? So once I was assured that that would not change. So that the only thing that's different, Blanca, is the fact that we've expanded our mission.
Yes.
So we are literally adding more in terms of degree opportunities, certification opportunities. So these are high-demand areas of study that we are adding to our repertoire, if you will. And so that is a great thing.
Yeah.
And so with change comes good things. But you still have to go through the heartache.
No, nobody likes change.
Nobody likes change. And you hear a little bit of everything. You have people who are in favor, you have people who are against it. In the end, but in the end, we had to focus on what matters. And that is the future of our city.
That's right.
And eventually, our state, and ultimately, our nation. And so it starts right here at Houston City College. And this change is a good thing.
It is a good thing. You know, I have to say, and I was telling Dr. Villagrand earlier, that I did all my undergraduate work here. I went through all my classes, my basic classes that everybody has to take. And then I transferred over to University of Houston. But you know, you mentioned the word affordable. I did that because it was affordable here. And it's still that way.
Yes, that's our main mission, is we want to continue for it to be affordable. And also, we're looking forward to having partners, partners in the industries so that when our students get their certification, now they're looked at, oh, they graduated from Houston City College.
Right.
So it's going to be a new name, a new idea, and it's just going to boost us.
That's right.
That's what we're looking at.
And you mentioned affordability, right?
Yes, yes.
And what's great about it with the name change, we're now elevated to Level 2 college, which means we can offer baccalaureate degrees.
Right, and I asked you about that earlier. What programs are you going to offer in that degree?
So we've improved for two right now. We're going for three more. But the first two are artificial intelligence and robotics.
Right. And that's like the wave of the future right now.
That's everywhere, right? It's everywhere. And then healthcare management. And so we're working on three more to be announced very soon. So we're excited. Our trustees made a great point about, you know, our employers and what our workforce. Houston is the best place not only to live, but also to work. Unlike our other peers across the country, there are jobs here. And so, you know, HCC, which is easier to say than Houston City College.
Yes, that's right, HCC.
And everybody notices HCC. And, you know, we got feedback from our community, our students.
Yes.
And we were so pleased to stay because if you go anywhere in HEB-- I mean, if you go anywhere, because I go to HEB a lot, right? And you're a supporter.
Yes, they're a supporter. They are. They're right here in the community.
You mentioned HCC, and they know it. They know what we offer.
That's right.
And I'm so proud of you that you went to HCC.
Yes, I was one of my-- I remember HCC went, it was out of-- I think it was out of Millby. Yeah, Millby High School. And then it went to Austin. And I mean, that's where it started. Look how big it has grown. Oh, my God. It's just, it's just, this is awesome that it's gotten to the Level 2 tier that now you can offer undergraduate degrees.
And one of the things that we were also, as trustees, we wanted to make sure that we weren't going to spend money and we weren't going to go out of our budget. And that was one of the reasons that we kept the acronym HCC.
Right.
Is so that it's noticeable, people know it, we can still use it. And even though we added the Houston City College, it's still, we just want to make sure that we don't overspend on rebranding.
Right, yeah, because that could be very expensive, rebranding everything. I think that y'all are offering the right programs because this is, like I mentioned earlier, everybody's going digital. Everybody is going to social media, they have to AI. Everybody has to learn that. Because, I mean, that's like essential in any job.
Yeah, well, the technology is really essential, right? It's evolving every day.
Exactly.
But what we're hearing also, which ACC is proud to also offer our programs that prepare our students for a career. So when they walk through the door, and no matter what age, we're getting them ready, not only with their technology skills, but we hear employers say it's about also the EQ skills.
Right.
Right? How to show up for work, right?
Oh, yes.
How to dress at work.
Be responsible.
Right. So at Southeast College, we have a career closet where we help our students who may be in need of suits to prepare them for interviews.
Right.
And so we're proud of those services so that we can prepare our students for the workforce.
That's right.
Because at the end of the day, yes, our students want education, right? Because education is a key to everything.
Correct.
But also a job to provide to their families.
That's right. Now, you're not, you're still going to have the workforce programs, like welding. What kind of programs that you offer in that area?
One of our biggest ones, welding.
Welding, that is.
We do the healthcare, and then--
Construction.
We do the construction also.
Yes.
So we, our workforce programs are expanding.
Right.
And we have great support from the state.
Yes, and probably a lot of partners in the area. A lot of construction companies out here, the Port of Houston.
Our neighbor right down the street, right?
A big--
So the trades are really back.
Yes.
If they weren't popular, you know--
Well, they weren't very popular many years ago. Because I remember, they, we had trade schools in San Antonio. And they, there was a particular trade school over there that they wanted everybody to go to. But then they wanted to gear us toward--
They were tracked. Students were being tracked. So not to the four-year college opportunities. Certain children, young people of lower income means were being tracked into the workforce piece, which is why it wasn't popular.
Right, back then.
Yeah, back then. But now, it's, I mean, these trades are making more money than some higher degrees. So you have to really look at and research what area of study best interests you. And if money is what's driving you, then you look to see what those salaries are, starting salaries reach.
That's right, because there was an interview named Daniel Siz that I interviewed not too long ago. And he says, you know, college is not for everybody, but education is. So that's so important. And Daniel, I want you to know, I quoted you.
But it's also the pathway opportunity, right? We mentioned welding. And just by, you know, we offer welding late at night and on the weekends. And if we offered welding at 2:00 a.m., it probably would make--
Yes.
--it so popular.
Yes.
But it's also the pathway. It's telling the student, you can be anything you want. You may start welding, but if your moonshot is engineer, we can help you create that pathway. So you may start out getting certificates.
Sure.
But then getting associates, and then a bachelor's, and then a master's.
Right.
So anything's possible.
I know that all of you have a background in education because otherwise you wouldn't be here. So how do you ensure that the name change preserves the college's community-centered values as it expands its mission? Because I know that you want to keep it, like you say, it's still a community college, and it's still in the community. And how do you reach out to the people out here to be a part of it or to participate?
You know, one of the things that the board is very focused on, our chancellor, our president, is we're laser-focused on measurable outcomes. So we're very, very big on making sure. Because when you expand, you can lose focus and you can lose touch with whether or not we are staying true to our mission of educating and graduating and, you know, persistence and retaining students. And so for us, I chair the academic committee. And through that committee, we ask for data. We're constantly asking for data, whether it's the graduation rates, which is up. We've got the retention rates, which are up right now, based on our data. So we're moving in the right direction. The key is not to take our pulse off of that, that need to ensure that we are looking at our outcomes and that we are happy with those outcomes. And if we're not, we need to redirect ourselves to ensure that we continue down the right path when it comes to educating, graduating, retaining, persistence, you name it.
Also, it's very important for us to work with our pre-K through 12 schools.
And so-- How do y'all manage that? How do you do that?
Well, we have advisors that are housed in the high schools.
Yes.
And so we have opportunities for the students there. And we do the dual credit program as well. And so we have a large number of students that participate and graduate. But I think our most successful programs are like our East Early College.
Right.
We have East Early College, we have early colleges throughout the city. And so those have been very successful.
Right.
But we also want to encourage other students to participate because at Houston City College, we have a waiver where they don't pay to go and take these classes. But some of the other districts are not as fortunate.
Yeah.
So we strive to get out there, get the word out. We go to our community meetings.
Yes, I see all of you at all the community meetings.
Yeah, we just have, try to put the word out that we're here, it's about them, this is your school, and you need to come and learn and grow. And we also have classes for 65 and over.
Yes.
And this year, we have a graduate that looks like--
72, she was 72.
72 years old, so we say, you're never cool.
You know, education is for everybody. It doesn't matter, it never stops. I am so happy because, you know, I wish, I wish these opportunities were around when we were in school. Because there's no reason why someone cannot get an education nowadays. I mean, it's just, it's just there, and it should be taken-- take the opportunity, why not? Okay, we're going to have to take a quick break to hear a word from our generous sponsor, Houston City College. And we'll be right back.
Learning looks like this, and it also looks like--
I didn't just study buildings. I connected them with tech to make them smarter.
I'm learning healthcare management while providing patient care.
I worked with these control systems way before I even started the job.
And if I can't make it in person, I take my classes online.
So where do you start?
And welcome back to Viva Magazine Live. And we're speaking to the board and president of Houston City College. So we were at the point where I was going to ask you, what are the most significant programs at Southeast Campus that students and community members should know about this year? Anybody can answer.
We have two programs that we're very proud of. And as a board, that we funded to make scholarships available. So we have Connect2 Workforce.
Yes.
And that is an opportunity for anyone who is seeking an area of study for certification studies. We have healthcare, we have construction, as we talked about, technology. And the board invested $1 million in scholarships for that particular program. So it's, you know, helping these students be able to realize their dream of becoming certified. And the good thing about this program is that you can finish these certificates in one semester.
Wow.
And so it's about getting them in and getting them out.
Right.
That's why, Blanca, when we talked about early, when our chair talked about earlier about the K-12 piece and so forth, it's our partnership with the K-12, but also with employers in our area to ensure that we are preparing our students for the workforce. And this particular program is really exciting.
Yes.
Because we're talking about, we take care of the financial piece, so that's not an issue. We will help you with daycare if you need it. That's not an issue. We've got a pantry, a food pantry, that's not an issue. So guess what? You focus on your certification. And in one semester, you are going to be in the workforce. The other thing we pride ourselves on in the other program is Houston Reconnect. And I'll talk about that one in a minute, or we will. But for Connect2 Workforce, that one as well, is for us, we take pride in ensuring that our job placement rates are high. And so it doesn't serve us any purpose if we're graduating our students and they can't get a job. And so for us as a board, the monitoring and the measurable outcomes is also that job placement piece, and what is that percentage? So we're seeing that increase. And it's all due to the fact that our presidents across the system, and in this case, we're very proud of our Southeast president, makes those connections so that we're ensuring job placement. So that's very exciting. For the Houston Reconnect, that $9 million the board has earmarked for scholarships for that particular program. That one's a little different. It's for a student who has entered the community college and for some reason left. We couldn't retain you, therefore you've left. And so our goal there is to find these students, to bring them back so that they can finish their studies.
I was going to say, how do you get those students back?
Exactly. And that's what we're, and we were just talking about that with the president, is that that's what's proving challenging.
Right.
Because how do you bring them back? How do you communicate that to the masses? Well, it's through interviews like what you're doing. And thanks to you, you're helping us get the word out that these programs exist, that there is an opportunity for you to come back and to, you know, start where you left off, you know? And so that's there. So that's just really exciting. I'll send it, give it to my chair, and then I'll let her know.
So, yeah, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
It's also, you know, one of the ways is phone calling.
Yes.
You know, whoever, if what information we had with them when they were students, we're using that information. We're doing the phone calling, we're doing the visiting, we're letter sending. And then through you. You know, this is just another avenue to reach out to them. But this opportunity is there.
It's called Houston Connect?
Reconnect.
Reconnect.
Houston Reconnect. So the funding is there, it's available. Again, we want them to complete what they started. And it's just, you know, I think that it's so motivating for them and encouraging them to know that, hey, somebody's interested in us.
Right, that's right.
And then they put this money aside for that.
Right. I mean, there is no reason why people should not get an education because it's all there for them.
Well, there's challenges, there's a lot of challenges.
Yes. But you provide that form--
But as long as they know that--
Food pantry and all the other--
Scholarships more than anything, Blanca. What a commitment from the board, right?
So they need to come and visit. You know, come to your college and visit.
That's right.
And I want to come back to the students that's knocked out, right, that we're trying to reach out to through wonderful platforms like yourselves, right?
Well, thank you, thank you. And, you know-- It's my pleasure, by the way, to interview incredible Latina leaders, really.
And our community and our students are resilient. When I mean resilient, they can do anything they want, but unfortunately, life happens.
Right, that's true.
And a lot of times, it is because of finances. It is because they hear, and our food, right? Those are just--
Or elderly folks they have at home.
And it's not because they couldn't do well in their classes. This life happened. And thanks to the trustees and the investment in $9 million, I'm going to speak to the community. If you came to HCC and you still want to achieve your dream or whatever you want to do, what courses? We're here for you. And thanks to the trustees who've committed this money, and this money is scholarship money, meaning that the money is there for you to complete. We're here as our advisors, our counselors, our faculty are here to help you come back to figure out a way so you can achieve anything you want to achieve.
That's right. So like you and all of y'all were saying, there's just, I mean, all the opportunity is right here. All you have to do is want it and go get it and get informed of how the resource-- and where can they go? Where, is there a website or they have to appear here at Houston Community?
Oh, they can go on our--
At Houston City College, I can win a college.
We're still getting used to it. We want to call it Houston Community College.
Like we said, the acronyms are there. So it's ACC.edu.
So how do they, do they have to come here in person or can they apply online? How do they do that?
So they can go anywhere they want to go. They can go to our website, they can call us at 718-7000.
718-7000, put that on the screen.
Also, they can just drop by, right? And anybody who, any door that they enter, somebody knows about these programs, and somebody's going to help them. And so, you know, we are, we're out in the community at the community fairs. We're out at, you know--
And I can attest to that because I've seen all of you there at all these community fairs and what have you.
And just don't be afraid to approach anybody who wears an HCC t-shirt or an HCC pin.
Yes, absolutely. Well, y'all are doing a great job. I mean, and y'all are just powerhouses in our community, right here in the East End. And we're so proud of all of you because you are leading the way in education in our area. So just thank y'all very much. And we're about to call it a wrap, unfortunately. I mean, we could go on and speak to all of you for another hour probably on all the programs that y'all are offering. So let me ask you, what's one last piece of advice, our message, that you want to leave the viewing audience of Viva Magazine Live?
A personal?
Eva or Adriana?
Let's start with our chair.
Yes.
Well, just to let them know that we, again, Houston City College is here for you. This is your home, this is your place. And we're here, we're so excited to be able to offer these opportunities. And it's all about moving on up and being the best that you can be.
That's right.
Houston City College is here, it will always be here. Its doors are open to you. So please, please, take advantage of the opportunities that we offer. Whether you're interested in a four-year career track in education for a baccalaureate degree, whether you're interested in an associate's degree or a certification in any area of construction, healthcare, pharmacy technician, you name it, we've got it. So please, call us at 713-718-7000.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
And then--
Ms. President?
We all were you at one time.
Yes.
We all have our own story and know that we are all committed to ensure that whatever needs that you have, we're going to help you. And I want to mention our community-based organizations that we work closely with. And so wherever you come from, know that we're here to help you. Nikasa Sukasa. And our website is www.hccs.edu. Either call us, go on our website, or just drop by. We're here for you to help you.
Okay, so tell me, what are the accolades that Houston City College has attained in the 54 years that it's been in existence? I'm sure there have been several of them.
And also, Houston City College is still number one within international students. We were considered like we're world-focused.
Yes.
So we go, we have a great online program. And so we have students that come through us. And we continue working with our students to make them the best. Plus, we, I know our robotics team, it won nationwide. And so we have very competitive students here. Oh, one of the big ones was that young lady that just got a scholarship through our--
Our Gucci.
Our Gucci program.
Wow, really?
She was from, she's from Central Campus--
Did she design something?
Fine Arts.
Oh, my God.
And she was one of the designers.
They gave her a scholarship.
That is so awesome. You need to get her on the show.
This was the first time a community student had gotten that award.
What talent.
So it's wonderful.
Yes.